Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, January 27th, 2025. I am the Board Chair, Eric Eldridge. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tingsborough Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Xfinity and Verizon, Fios, and is livestreamed on our website, www.tingsboroughma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video-on-demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio, so declare that now. Seeing none, after instruction from the State Fire Marshal and the Tingsborough Fire Chief, in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. With that, I would like to ask all of those who can to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will now go to Board Introductions, starting from my left.
Good evening, Jacqueline Schnacker, Executive Assistant.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Jackie Gilfus.
Good evening, Ron Cohane.
Good evening, Colin Moizel, Town Manager.
Good evening, Catherine Foster, Assistant Town Manager.
Excellent. We've got an action-packed agenda. Why don't we start with some meeting minutes?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the regular session meeting minutes for review and approval for January 6th, 2025.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Obstand.
Abstain? That carries 3-0-1. Executive Session?
Yep. Mr. Chair, I move that the Executive Session meeting minutes for review, approval, but not release for January 6th, 2025.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Obstand.
That carries 3-0-1. All right, Citizen and Business Time. I think we've got some folks that may want to speak. This is for items that are not on the agenda. Citizens, if you want to come up and speak, there's a three-minute limit on it with a total of 15 minutes. Come up to the Chair and give us your name and address and the floor will be yours.
Good evening. My name is Susan Maury. I live at 24 Cricket Lane. I'm a Board Member of the recently established Tingsborough Land Trust and I would like to publicly thank Selectman Cohane and his wife for becoming members of the Land Trust and encourage all of you Select People and anyone in this room to join the Land Trust. I have a few handouts for the Select People, if that's okay?
Sure.
We're just a year old. We don't have any property yet, but our goal is to preserve and protect land within Tingsborough. It's all explained within the brochure and if anyone needs more information, we do have a website and we also have a Facebook page. So, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I think we can move on to the ceremony, which everybody is waiting for. So, I guess, am I giving that to you, Colin, or to the Chief? I think I'm handing it to you, Chief. It's all yours.
Mr. Moizel, Chairman Eldridge, Members of the Select Board. It's always an honor to come before you and share the positive actions and accomplishments of our department and its members. Tonight is one of those moments as we recognize a significant milestone in the career of an exceptional individual within our agency. I'm pleased to present the promotion of Sergeant Cynthia Shay to the rank of Lieutenant. Lieutenant Shay's outstanding leadership, extensive experience, and unwavering dedication to the things where Police Department, its members, the community, and the law enforcement profession make an exemplary choice for this well-deserved promotion. With over 28 years of distinguished service in law enforcement, Lieutenant Shay has consistently demonstrated professionalism, excellence, and an unrelenting commitment to public service. Lieutenant Shay began her career as a Public Safety Dispatcher for the town of Westford in 1995 before graduating from the Lowell Police Academy and joining the Tingsborough Police Department as a Patrol Officer in 1998. She served as a Patrol Officer from 1998 to 2011 and as a Patrol Sergeant from 2011 to 2013. In 2013, Lieutenant Shay was promoted to the rank of Detective Sergeant, where she led the department's Criminal Investigations Division. In 2019, she was assigned as the Court Prosecutor overseeing criminal and civil cases processed in District and Superior Courts and serving as the department's liaison to the Middlesex District Attorney's Office. In her new role, Lieutenant Shay will serve as a commanding officer of the Special Services Division, which encompasses Criminal Investigations, Court Prosecution, the School Resource Officer Program, and the department's Clinician Co-Response Program. Beyond her formal duties, Lieutenant Shay has made numerous significant contributions to our department. She co-founded the Tingsborough Police Department's Honor Guard in 2001. She played a role in redesigning the department's patch in 2010. She's been an active member of the Superior Officers Union Executive Board, and additionally, she represents the department as a delegate to the Massachusetts Police Association. Lieutenant Shay's exemplary career, coupled with her vision and dedication to excellence, will undoubtedly continue to enhance the effectiveness of our department and our services to the community. I've worked closely with Lieutenant Shay over the last several years and have watched her personally, and have watched her personal and career development and growth as a supervisor and as a leader. She earned this opportunity and I'm proud to make this promotion. Please join me in congratulating Lieutenant Cynthia Shay on this well-deserved achievement. I will now have Lieutenant Shay recite the oath of office. At the conclusion of the swearing-in, Lieutenant Shay will be presented with her official Lieutenant's badge by her husband, Rashay. Ready? Raise your right hand and get after me. Aye?
Aye. Cynthia Shay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully impart.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties incumbent upon me.
As a Lieutenant. For the town of Tingsborough.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you for your time.
So, so well-deserved, as we've talked about. I'll let the other Board Members speak, but at the end of this, I think you're going to go out in the hallway and get lots of pictures. So, you'll have an opportunity to go and do that right now, but I'll open it up to the Board if anybody wants to make any comments.
Just congratulations again, many years of dedicated service to Tingsborough and well-deserved.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations and, I mean, what a beautiful testament to your service and your community that folks have shown up like this. This is really lovely to be able to be part of this with you.
Thank you.
The fortunate opportunity to never have been pulled over by Lieutenant Shay, but it's well-earned. So, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And with that, we're, the ceremony's over, we'll get plenty of pictures out in the hallway, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, are we going to, do you need?
Everybody.
Yeah, I'm going to wait for all this, but I didn't know whether we needed to set up for the projector and all that stuff. Do you want to, we can move the?
We have the flag episode. Move the flag.
the joint meeting with the Historical Commission.
Just grab the flag in the back so it doesn't fall off.
It only needs to come a short distance.
So, are we going to have them come up to the table and do we, do we need, I don't know
Is it connected?
No.
I don't know most far.
how many folks are here from the Historical Commission?
How did this come about?
Do we need more chairs?
I think it's just two that are speaking.
Jackie.
Yeah, as long as the door is unlocked.
The trick is.
Oh, the warden's here.
This is one of those scenarios where more is not more, so I'm going to stay right here.
There you go.
I have to come around and say hello because I'm one of the volunteers in town.
Oh, yeah. I'm not touching it.
No.
Official flag.
Yeah.
I'm not touching them.
Official business.
Absolutely.
And thank you for supporting the senior work our program all the time as a woman of a few words.
Get back to work.
Take care.
You want to move into this?
Get back to work.
Okay. Are you going to kick this off for, okay. Are we, are we good? Everybody settled? Excellent. All right, Colin, if you can kick us off on this one?
I'm going to let my friends, Augie and Adam, do a lot of the talking, but we've talked about this before. The Historical Commission has been hard at work, as they'll describe, putting together the history of and the vision that they have, I think, is accurate to describe for the Winslow School. So, I met with Adam and Augie a few times. Augie did this entire presentation himself on a tablet. I saw it, but I will turn it over to the two of them now to, to kick it off.
Okay, well, thank you for seeing us tonight. My name is Warren Allgrove. I'm on the Historical Commission. Adam Bastine, he's on the Historical Commission, and we've put together something to show the people of what our vision is and hopefully give an idea of what we'd like to do with the Winslow School and get, get the ball rolling. So, how do I get to the next one? I just, I just looked.
Point at me and I'll start moving.
Tap twice.
We are going to go through all these things, the historical significance, the goals, the current state, the future use, reference projects, finances, community support, and community support survey. So, we did, if we go up to the number one, I mean, the historical significance, I'm just going to go through these things, give you an idea of where our heads at. In 1789, Sarah Ting Winslow, daughter of Sarah Ting and Eliza Ting, established a trust that was used to establish the Winslow School and the Meeting House. So, that was, you know, obviously, the Tings and they were trying to get, establish the town. And one of the things you do to establish a town is a meeting house. And the school did come later. We had about nine small schoolhouses that moved around the town to wherever the most children were, and that was getting to be out of hand. So, they wanted to build just one building. So, the Winslow School was that place. So, the Winslow School actually led to the creation of the Town Center along with the fact that we had the, the church, the, yeah, the old Town Hall that we still use and the Meeting House. That kind of created the Town Center. We also had a mill there, which of course, the mill was one of the main things that started the commerce in town. So, that led to our creation of the Town Center. Winslow School graduates have been a significant contributing factor to our town's direction and identity over the years. Many of the people that went to the Winslow School have been people who have stayed in town and Fire Chiefs, Heads of Highway Department, Town Attorneys, and Selectmen. I mean, that, that school, you could look back at the people who went through that school and they're the ones who gave us the town that we have today. The school's an integral part to the funding, development, and identity of the town and shouldn't be preserved and used. I think a lot of people who've gone through this town for years have looked up the hill and you see the school. I mean, certainly the people that went there see it as a great part of our, our school system at one time, and now the townspeople have, you know, been looking at it for years and we really want to get to the point where we finish this Town Center project and they can continue to look at the Winslow School and the library property. The library was an integral part of the school at the time. When you went to Winslow School, you went over to the Littlefield Library to get, to use the library. The whole five-acre lot has been registered as a historical significance and the Winslow School and the library were nationally registered in 2017 as a historic place with the United States Department of the Interior. And I mean, when you got to think back, that we had to go through quite a process to do that and the people of the town, the Board of Selectmen, had to back that. And so, the Board of Selectmen felt that, you know, that school and that, and the Littlefield Library held significant importance to this town and our history. It was built in 1892. The rear addition was 1915 and the south addition was 1948. And so, actually, I learned tonight that Dick Singleton's grandfather was the one who built the addition in 1948. And so, you know, that, again, you know, you go back to, the school is a part of our community. It always has been. There is a moderate to a high potential for the recovery of historic archaeological resources at the Winslow School, according to the people in Boston, and they, they would like to go over the property to look for artifacts. So, our short-term goal, we would like to use the allocated money from the Town Meeting to finish the outside of the building and begin renovating the inside. And we'd like to get going before damage is done to the building. After the lead removal and the asbestos removal, they, the, the building was left kind of bare and we would like to get back to getting that building in enough shape so it can at least maintain itself instead of just letting it turn into dust. Long-term use is the Winslow School as a community center and space able to assist the expansion of the Town Hall. I don't think that anybody doesn't realize that there's not enough room in this Town Hall. When this Town Hall was built, it was for exactly half the number of people that are employed here today. And I've been to meetings where, I've been to, I was at a Sewer Department meeting and it was held in the hallway because there's not enough rooms. There are plenty of rooms down there and it would give us a chance to not worry so much about the, the, I mean, the library wants this one, you haven't got enough rooms. When people come in to do audits, you don't have any place to put those people. Those are using the rooms. I mean, the lunch, the lunchroom's used for the auditors and it's not like they only come once a week. I mean, once a year. They, they seem to be here quite often. Or if you have another, if, if you have anything going on where an outside business has to come in and do, and do work, they don't have any place. And, you know, that's pretty standard for any, any town. So, so a little history, I guess, with the revitalization of the Town Center and buildings was started in 1995. It's, it, it seems hard to believe that, you know, it's been that long since we started. And it was basically where the falls are that we just put the, the deck and we just started to clean that up and make it so it was presentable. And the stone wall that, that's across the street from the old Town Hall, that was all vines and falling down trees. We just started there and we actually, I don't, the plan is still around. We actually had a company come in and do a plan to terrace off where the, where the falls are so that you could get down there. The Winslow School was still in use until 2002. That was the last year and so there's still some people that went there around. The town was eyeing the Winslow Schools and New Town Hall. So, when this place was being, when we were looking to build a new Town Hall, we, we went to the school committee. We actually had the school committee come into a meeting and they told us that the Winslow School is never going to be given up. And shortly after this building was done, they gave us the keys and said they didn't want it. And I just like to say that because one is that, that was probably always considered the best spot for a Town Hall. So, a community center or an extension of the Town Hall would be, you know, is, is still a good idea. And it gives you a little background because people say, well, why didn't you do this before? Well, it was looked at, but it just didn't happen. It was just poor, poor timing, I guess. Eventually, the school committee gave, gave it back to the town, but this was all built by then and the school was closed and mothballed. And that's how we kind of got where we are. So, we have maintained that over the years, kept the roof leaks taken care of. We pulled the rugs out. The fans were put in to keep it aerated and, you know, we've taken off some of the stuff that, that has rotted. We took off the, the, the deck so kids wouldn't call. More damage was done to that building by people breaking in than there was by the building sitting there. And so, that's been, you know, most of those, the, the doors have been locked up much better and it just seemed, we finally got, finally got control of that situation. There was a structural review done and the extent of, there was damage, but was, the, the bones of the building, as they, as it was written, are in good shape and it continues to be in good shape. And there are some bad spots, no doubt, but there's not enough to, to consider, be concerned about. The, that building is in better shape than when we started on the old Town Hall. And that project came in and, and we all know how that, that turned out, so. The water, electricity, sewer line stub is already in place. So, that's a pretty big thing you don't worry about until you have to pay for it. But the sewer is stubbed on Middlesex Road, Winslow Road, kind of right there. That's not actually Winslow Road, but I guess it's been renamed. And so, there's a lot of savings there that we don't have to worry about. Those things, that, that building already has electricity. It already has the water. And as late, we what, spent 480 mil, 80, 480 million? No, that was just to get your attention. I wanted to see if you were awake. $480,000, I think it was, for the asbestos removal. Did we get that far? Anyways.
It was last night.
It was, it was a lot of money. But anyways, so the building sits there and we've, we've already spent money to make something usable and I think we should just, you know, it seems sensible that the next thing you would do is start to use it. The previous committee was formed to evaluate the use of the land for a fire or police station, but they determined that the traffic and limited access made it impractical. And that was also true for turning it into a commercial building. You have a couple of problems there and basically it's because you only have one way in and one way out. You're limited to what you could do. You can't go out the back way and go through that parking lot because now you're into a contract with the people that you use their land to make the road in for the, for the back parking lot. So, you kind of, that, that stops there and it wouldn't have made any sense anyways. And so, and as far as putting fire trucks out into the traffic, I don't think that you want to drag a 45-foot truck that's in a hurry out into that traffic. And it just seems that if you, when you think about the traffic that's there at night from Thanksgiving on till Black Friday or whatever it is, I mean, you just can't move. But that's something that has to be, you know, certainly considered and that was considered in those other committees and that was the reason, that was one of the reasons that they looked at. The people, when we did a survey and the, the people have chosen to preserve the school for historic value. When we did the survey, people want to save this school. They want to get, they want to get use out of it and they want it to become part of our Town Center. In the previous vote, it was unfortunate. There was no option to save the entire building in the previous vote. It was only to save the middle section, the older section. The, the people wanted, that was the only way they could go to save the building because the options were save the center section and turn it, which, which because it became so cost prohibitive, it didn't happen. But the other options for the people at that Town Meeting would have put it in a dumpster or do nothing. And they chose to spend 1.5 million dollars to save it. So, and, and that, I think if we had had what, what should have been on there was that choice, was if you want to save the building and move to make it a community center. Give the people that option to use the money to finish the outside of the building. I mean, I, I think that, I know that the way it was written up, that you can't use that money to, except for on the center section. I get that. But what we would like to do is move to make it so that we can use that money to do the outside of the building and get it weather tight. Next, can, who?
This is the next one.
You, did you already do it?
Yeah. Oh, quick.
I'm talking too much. The, the building's existing structure is strong enough to function as a school, a general office space with only minor reinforcement needed in classrooms one and two, which are the original classrooms. And you wouldn't be talking about doing more than putting lally columns in to hold the floor because at, it has to, it has to not flex at 100 pounds and it flexes when it gets a little over 90. So, that is, that's a minor repair. It wouldn't be getting into a major construction job. The targeted structural upgrades, like adding support beams and lally column, columns can easily adapt the building for public uses. So, if we were to use it as a school, it was stated, we wouldn't have to do anything. That's, it's, it's, it's good enough for that. But to add public meetings there and to get to the 100 square foot, 100 pounds a square foot, we would have to put the lally columns in the front section, but the rest of it's fine. I mean, I, I, I think that, um, I know that the way it was written up, that you can't use that money to u, except for on the center section, I get that. But what we would like to do is move to make it so that we can use that m- money to do the outside of the building and get it weather tight. Next, can, who?
This is the next one.
You, did you already do it?
Yeah.
I'm talking too much. The, um, the building's existing structure is strong enough to function as a school, a general office space with only minor reinforcement needed in classrooms one and two, which are the original classrooms. And you wouldn't be talking about doing more than putting lolly columns in to hold the floor because at, it has to, it has to not flex at a hundred pounds and it flexes when it gets a little over ninety. So that is, uh, that's a minor repair, it, it wouldn't be getting into a major construction job. The targeted structural upgrades like adding support beams and lolly com, columns can easily adapt the building for public uses. So if we were to use it as a school, it was stated, we wouldn't have to do anything. That's, it's, it's, it's good enough for that. But to add, uh, public meetings there and to get to the hundred square foot, a hundred pounds a square foot, we would have to put the lolly columns in the front section, but the rest of it's fine. We need to do, when we're talking about the current state of the building, what we would like to do right away is simple fixes to the downspouts will improve water drainage and protect the buildings. Probably the worst thing the kids kept doing was tearing the downspouts off the, the, uh, building. And when they did that, the water would run off the roof and down the building. And, you know, I went up there personally, the town had people go up, you couldn't keep up with it. So, um, that, that's something we'd like to be able to do and do something very permanent there. And actually, the last time we, now that the police have been going up there more regular, um, it's better. But after these people went through and took away the, the last group we had in there, they took the downspouts off for no known reason. And so we're missing them now. Preserving and reusing the building offers a cost-effective solution for meeting the town's space needs while maintaining a historic community asset. So we have the building, we have the need and we just need to, to utilize it. It's, it's not that confusing. There's, there's no way you, I mean, we know what the meeting's, trying to get a meeting with everybody is a tight thing in this building. Because everybody wants to do it at night and everybody wants to do it on the same days. You're not gonna do it on Friday, you're gonna do it Monday through Thursday, you've got four days and a lot of people. So there's an opportunity to solve a problem, which means, y- you know, we just have to take what's in front of us and use it. What we, what we were proposing is to try and is, well, we'll go, there's a couple of things here that kinda all run into each other. So to renovate the south section of the Winslow School to accommodate the town, AV media space and community room using seven and eight. So if you're looking at the front of the building, we're talking about the left end. And, um, one of the architects put the elevator at that end. And if you see the, where we have the red going around, so what we'd like to do is to get started is get this end with the, that little, to the left, to the left, right there, that's, that's, that's the, uh, that's, they call it a library, for some reason or other, I don't know, it's a hallway, believe me. But that's where they, they talked about putting an elevator, which would actually be pretty cool. It would work there and that would give us full access to the, to the building. And the eleva, I mean, elevators are not a crazy cost. I mean, I know it's gonna be more than we did at the old town hall, but the old town hall was a hundred thousand dollars to do an elevator. So to take, to make the place handicapped accessible because it's got long hallways and it doesn't have stairs on each level, once you're there, you're there. So that, if we get the elevator there, we can start using that end. And we were hoping that the, um, that's with seven and eight, we start to get used and that'll make it a right-of-way problem solver because you could put the AV in there. And the, and, and that would help open up this room for the library and, um, and actually let Rony spread his wings a little bit. So. Oh, come on, Colin, you're falling asleep on me now. Do you want me to tap, I can tap the table, the, uh, there we go, thanks, I got lost. So, um, and the library could use the current communities. Add the elevator to the, to the place I was talking about, create a path from the new parking lot. So that place really, for this small part of it, uh, would not have any parking problems. They would, there's enough around the building. But we may ha, you know, if you needed more parking for some reason or other, you could create a path from the new parking lot because that's already an, a acceptable path. And so to, to come off of that and make it, um, accessible wouldn't be a, a problem as far as going height, you just have to do the paving. The same rooms in the basement level can be used for meeting spaces, um, and recreational department, seasonal event space for festival of trees, block party. I mean, nobody expected, I don't, well, I shouldn't say nobody expected. When we started to, I think we started the first, uh, festival of trees, we just called it a Christmas party. And we opened up the old town hall and I think it was two thousand and one. And all we had were probably fifty or sixty people. Then the next time we had three hundred, we still had Santa Claus come, we had the fire trucks, we blocked off the road and we had the lighting of the trees. Well, obviously Allison has taken that to an incredible spot. With all the things that we proposed, the reason to do over that building, it just, it just turned out so much better and, and everything is just, you know, it's all tied together. And this is part of our, our, you know, our center town. So this is the last piece of all our buildings. So then if you did the, so the right, the, um, the east end, we get that done and then, um, we start to renovate the rest of the building. And that's a big part of what, the way we look at this is we're not trying to, and I, and I know I spoke of this at the town meeting. We're not trying to come in here and just, you know, get a big che, well, I mean, if you guys write one out tonight, I'll take it, but even if it's personal. The, um, to write a, to write the big check. We know it's, we know what the, you know, we all live in town and we know what it, it's costing to live here. And nobody's looking forward to doing anything that costs more money. But, you know, it's not like we don't have a use for it and we've come up with some things that we think will help with, with the cost. And these are the same ideas that we used when we did the old town hall over and the, and the meeting house. There was no, there was nothing to look back on and say, you, there was no track record that could be set. But now those buildings, you have a beautiful town center and those buildings are paying for themselves. And we get to use them also and they look great. And you finally have a decent ti, town center to, to be proud of. Now, if you go back to ninety-five, when you, if you look to the, where the gazebo is now, next to the left side of the town hall, there was an apartment building there that was a, an old, uh, three apartments, two-story building. And, you know, everybody said, why would you buy that? And we bought that, we burnt down, the guy took the insurance money and we bought the lot so we'd have the start of a park. It was very difficult then to see what the vision was. But now we shouldn't have that problem anymore. Everybody in town should be able to look at this and say, okay, you know, this, this finishes the whole vision. You have the, the, the old town hall, you have the meeting house, you have the area in between. And now you've got the, uh, the veterans park, we did the work on that and got, that, that's beautiful. I mean, this whole section of town is beautiful, we're down to the last building. And nobody, I don't, I don't think that you could have told people in two thousand that it would be this nice. And I don't think that anybody expected the amount of use and enjoyment that townspeople get from it. I mean, yeah, we all enjoy trash pickup, but I'll tell you what, when you go to the block party, everybody's having a good time. And it's, and it's, these are the type of buildings, if you do this building over, it's not like a sports field that's only good for six, seven, eight months a year. This is all year long, you get, you get to use it for everything. So th- those are some of the things, um, we, we talk about in this. And, um, we want multipurpose meeting space rental. Now, we know that when the old to, when the old town hall, when they were doing the dam, the coun, the, uh, the people rented the downstairs for an office. So that just tells you that there's an opportunity for people that come into this town that might wanna do a short-term rental for an office, three months, four months. But they don't wanna get tied into a year lease. It, it's a niche to be filled and maybe we can work with that opportunity. We certainly did when it came to the old town hall. And then that, that goes to the office rental space. And there's people that are always looking for rental space for, um, arts, crafts, exercise. And, you know, you know, I know that's, that's like saying, oh, you know, you're gonna have a farmer's market, you're gonna have this. But these are things that are actually happening and these are things that other towns are doing. And they're getting filled because it's for people who can't afford to rent a whole big space, but would like to be able to do a, a one-night-a-week type thing, they don't have to rent for a month. And, and those opportunities, we, we believe there's a niche there to be filled. Am I taking too long, Colin?
No.
No, I'm ju, I just seen you checking the clock.
Want another opinion? No.
Ron, am I taking too long?
Say a thing, I'm not gonna say a thing.
And the farmer's market, I mean, we haven't had, we, we've had the farmer's market a couple of times. And a farmer's market's a pretty cool thing for any town to have, we see a lot of them come and a lot of them go. If we have a, um, a good spot where, you know, I, I just think about down in Newburyport, if you've ever been to the farmer's market down there, they've got it set up pretty nice so that you really got farmers in there and, and they're bringing their produce. And tho, those are the things that can be done i- if you, if, if it's done correctly. You, you get down there every, they got the hours and you, and you go, you, you have to kinda ride around to get a parking spot. But when you finally get it, you know, it's a rotation going on, but it's always busy and it goes a full season. Spring to late fall. So it can be done and there is an opportunity for that. So, yeah, that, the, um, renovate the east section of the Winslow School. So we're looking at, you know, there is going, well, you have to see that, how small some of the offices are here. There, there has to be a place that's just overflow. And we feel that the Winslow School would work like that. I know that Colin wants to keep every, keep track of everybody, we can put cameras up for him. But, um, they can punch the time clock. So the, um, and, and, but it is an opportunity to think about some of the things about, I mean, we do know the library would like this more often, that's, that's never, never been in doubt. I mean, this was built as a community room fifty-fifty. And, um, so this would be an opportunity to take some of the heat off of this building. And I don't see, I think when this building was built, the town was ten thousand people and it was only so busy. And look at us now, how busy this town is and how many more people it takes to run town. Because we just, you know, we don't have a part-time building inspector anymore, we have a full-time. And I mean, no doubt the neck, that, that there'll be a, another person, um, that will, you know, an assistant building inspector. Those things are just things that are gonna happen. And whether you wanna, I mean, I don't wanna believe that the town's as big as it is now, but, you know, it's here. So you have to see that those things are gonna come. And so this, this building being taken care of and being made to be usable, you eliminate the fact of a problem that's gonna come, maybe not while you're here, but maybe ten years from now. And that's, we all have to look, is what the poor guy behind us gonna get stuck with. And, um, phasing the renovation, so that goes back to, we really don't want to ask for the big check, but we, we wanna use CPC funds. And one of the problems that we have is that I can't ask, I, I can't ask for any of the, um, the money from the state like we've been using for the library. Now, the library, we've been doing pretty good, we got like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars doing the roof, doing some painting, doing some wind, the doors. So they ma, they match you, but you have to have the money up front and you have to have the plan and you have to have the okay. So a- until we start to, to solidify some sort of a, a deal where we can start on that building, we can't go and apply. And we do wanna apply, but those take a year. So, so no matter what, you're always behind. And, um, and, and we also, they have, when they have money left over at the end of the year, we, for smaller projects, where it might be just a door, you get it, the front door done or something like that, you can ask for those things, but you have to be ready. Um, and if we had the money sitting there going ahead, we would be able to do that. Gradual upgrades, yeah, so we're just trying to make it, you know, so we can afford to do it. And the improvements, of course, as we go along, we'll do the, we'll do the improvements that make it a good, solid envelope around it. And then, um, we will do, we'll start to work into making it usable. So, like I said, uh, when it's renovated, we feel it could be utilized as a town hall annex. I think that, I don't, I, I, I think that that's easily, easy to envision because you can see that we're just gonna keep growing. And you just need more room. You can't put any more rooms in the rooms that are here now, you're all done. The only thing left is that closet, the, um, and I'm not sure who wants that, so poor Ron will probably be stuffed in there next. The, um, hopefully, I, I don't, I haven't heard much about the pathway between this building and the Winslow School. That was kinda, that was something that was certainly looked for and we were working with the people. I, I haven't heard, but, I mean, that, if that's pursued, that would certainly make it really nice. I mean, you'd have to buy golf carts for people to get back and forth, but it would be nice, I mean, you know.
I volunteer.
We'll get the nice golf carts. And, um, but, but that would, it would, it would, it would tie it all together, it would be very nice. It does complete a scenic walking path loop, did I not move fast enough? See, um, we'll, s- s- so we've always talked about making, you know, go down Middlesex Road and, well, Win, and then Winslow Road and, uh, which is really Thomas Road. But any, and then up Kendall, Bryant and back down to create the, the true center. And, um, those are the type of things we, we would like to continue to work with. But the Winslow School would be part of that because it would be a place to function out of. And it would revitalize the historic downtown. We're looking for a place to have everybody come. And, and you know, it's certainly, when that was said, when, before the old town hall was done, we were talking about getting people in the community to have a place to go to hang out. And you don't get, y- y- you don't get to divide, you know, you don't have the school people and the not-school people and all. Everybody goes to the town center and has a good time. And this'll be like that. I mean, you, you would just be making that a larger area to do that in. And, you know, of course, I mean, I don't know how far Allison can take the Festival of Trees, but my God, she'll probably fill that building up too. And, um, it, it'll just keep growing, so. So, I mean, you know, you, you gotta give yourself a, you know, everybody, when we didn't have the old town hall to talk about, it was pretty difficult to say it could be done. But we did do the old town hall project and we did get, we did do the project under budget and we got it done in time. Certainly, it's an asset to the town and I don't think that there's anybody that feels embarrassed to show the center of Tinsborough anymore. We went from, look, look like a bombed-out area to a, a beautiful center. And the meeting house, self-supporting complement to the old town hall, both of those buildings now, it took us time, but we got there and we're using them. And we, we looked at the Brimfield Hitchcock Free Academy, it's a similar project and it's been going since the fifties. And the, the programs and the opportunities in that place, they change to meet the times. So with these rooms being open the way they are, y- you know, you, you can, you can divide them, you can put, uh, you know, walls up inside them and make temporary walls, or you can leave them large. But for whatever it is, the school is capable of being changed around for the use that you need. It's, it's not, um, we're not building solid, it's, it just is. And the CPC funding, so we've got the money, um, we don't have one point five anymore, but we have, uh, we have some, over a million dollars, we'd like to, uh, try to, try to get using that for that renovation. The state fund reimbursable matching grants specifically for the preservation of properties on the historic place register and state grants will match fifty percent. on the historic place register and state grants will match fifty percent. But like I said, you gotta have it in the bank account and you gotta have the okay to go ahead or they don't wanna talk to you. And it still takes a year. So even if you, you know, start it tomorrow, it's a year before the stuff comes. So, it's really something that you have to get rolling, get it flowing and get it moving to get the, so we can get some of their money. The, the, the previous plan from make, it was not feasible. That was the last one we did at the last town meeting. The, uh, it was gonna cost way more than, than was thought. And so, we would like to, uh, just preserve the building as it is and make use of it as it is with that money. First phase would be town use, the AV center. And as we go along, phase for community and rental space. And we, and we're going, you know, we're not, we're not trying to break the bank. We, we are looking for ways and we feel that we, we did do it at the Old Town Hall. That came true, so we can do it again here. There's a chance we can, we can pull this off and, and get it done. The, uh, guys thought it was the end, didn't ya?
Somebody not off?
No, we, uh, no, you was, you knew I was coming here, right? You know?
No, we have the package. We can see where you're gonna, we know where you're going.
So, we, you know, we are, we are dedicated to restoring the school. And, um, we want the, the structure to stay where it is, no parts to be demolished and preserve the historic look of the downtown. I mean, when you talk about turning the building to look south or at the river, the building was actually put where it is to look at the river. It's just that the trees have grown. So, if you feel that we have to see the river from the Winslow School when you stand up, all we gotta do is trim the trees at the old ferry landing and we can see the river. You can actually see the farm if you, if you want across the way. So, uh, the second highest item in the master plan is a historic downtown with open green space. So, there you go. The first was a bicycle path. I, I, I didn't get that, but anyways. So, the bicycle path was number one. And this is what the people in the master plan wanted for downtown, open space. And it certainly is unusual for a town to have as much open space. We, we're actually kinda lucky that nobody did anything in the thirties when they put the bridge in. Because if they had, we, we wouldn't have the opportunity to do it now. And in the sense of, who knows what they would've done. But now we can make it usable. So, it's an opportunity. This is our roadmap to preserve the building and the surrounding property for community use. I mean, we're trying to finally tie this all together. And, um, other than the building, I mean, the things that have to be done to tie it together, sidewalks, walking paths, I mean, that'll take you, you know, i- if you look at this as a, as a, it becomes a central place to hang out. You, you can walk down to the falls, the Flint's Pond Falls. You can go to the falls at the Veterans Park. You can just walk around the loop. You can go across the street from here and, and go through those paths in the woods. I mean, it finally ties everything together. This is the final piece. And, um, what we would like to do, um, is create a historic district when this building's done for the town center. And it would, and maybe even further, I mean, you, we even talked, not our group so much as for the master plan, it would, talked about going across the river and doing the, uh, part of Pawtucket Boulevard that was replaced by Ca- uh, Canopolis Way. So, um, it is an opportunity. It, it does move quite a few things just by it happening. So you probably try to do a, a village basically from Bryant Lane on Kendall Road down. You'd have to probably pick it up on Middlesex Road someplace, probably Bryant Lane again. And then probably from the end of Westford Road up because you have, um, the academy up there. So you have all that green space, which really, you know, the grass always looks nice there. So, that's, um, and, you know, it, it is about the river, so we have that. So here's some of the pie charts that, that we put together. What we did was, um, during the block party, we, we had people stop and fill out, uh, forms. And so it's kinda self-explanatory, the Festival of Trees, they, they want more. They want more block party space and they want a community center. And you, you know, that's what it is. I mean, people want these things for their town. This kinda finishes what a town usually gives its, its residents. This is the type of thing, along with trash pickup and plowed roads, they have community centers. And, uh, so, all of those, you know, were seventy-six, seventy-six and eighty-one. The community center pulled eighty-one. So, it's, it's not like we're shooting from the hip. People want this. And so we were talking about, you know, kinda, kinda to, to make it something that people go to use. So we do, we, we, we thought about a coffee shop. I guess, you know, you might say, you know, if you're gonna go to TV, you say Central Perk, right? Cause that's the dream. So, um, y- y- you know, people see that as a good use for it and that they would enjoy that. So, y- you know, is, is another thing, uh, the multipurpose space, which is kinda what we talked about where whatever is hot at the time, you know, it's like pickleballs hot now, so we built all those pickleball things. But, you know, in ten years, nobody will be playing on it because it'll be something new. So, that won't be that, that bad, you know? We'll, we'll just have to change a couple of, uh, rooms around and move some new furniture in. The town media center, if people get that, I mean, you'd be talking, um, you know, a place where we could actually have, where people could, could use it and have an office set up for it. Roni's got some great ideas for it and, um, he needs some space. We, compared to other towns, well, I guess, I can just say that compared to other towns, our media center's not that large. Most of, most larger. And this will give the opportunity to have that grow. And I, I, you know, you, you see podcasts are a big thing. I mean, these are the things that are becoming very normal and we don't have them. So, it would be an opportunity to do that and, and think along that line. And, and have a studio. And the, um, and, and I know that there's an account that i- is available to help that happen. And so we could, you know, that could become part of it, you know, and you wouldn't have to wait. You could start on it. So that kinda, these two kinda go together, the, uh, media center and the recording space. And, was that my last one? That's the end?
Yes.
Now I just gotta start talking about stuff I know? Yeah, we don't got that much time. But I would like to get this done before I drop dead. And I am getting old. And, and I'm, and I'm telling you that, um, I'd like to get started sooner than later. And, and I would, you know, we're looking for the support of the selectmen. You know, we've been, been doing this since, uh, nineteen ninety-five. So, I think it's only fair. I've had to live through this building. I had to live through the, the elementary school, the, uh, the new, the new high school. And, um, y- you know, the, the football, the, all the fields at the elementary school. And I, I, you know, this is, this is the last thing I'll ask for cause I probably won't be here anymore. But this is the last thing I'd ask for. So, if you wanna write the check, I'll take it with me tonight. I, I'm re- we're really just looking for some support. We're looking for the selectmen to give us some support.
Well, first off, thanks for coming in. I, I think this was fantastic. It was overdue, right? It was something where, um, we wanted to kinda understand where, where things are and, and what we wanna, uh, do in that. And you've outlined, um, a lot of ideas for us. So I think, um, with that, thanks for coming in. But I'll open it up to the board for questions or comments. Mr. Moran, did you wanna start?
Sure, so, great vision, um, thank you very much. You know, I think the idea of using the CPC funds, which, you know, if I could write that check today, I would, cause it's already a levy on our property or taxes or whatever we pay. So I'm happy to support that and I would, um, you know, I think good ideas. It, I think the, you know, the mindset you're bringing to it is, I think you'll be around longer than you think, first of all. Secondly, I think that, you know, having that three, five, seven, ten years. And I think I liked what I, what I heard you say earlier was, you know, think about what you're leaving for the next guy or the next gal, right? And that's the concept is that if you do something, this, you do a really good job, you wind up with a nice town center and, yeah. I'm happy with it. I, I'll, I'll sign the check, but, I mean, no bounds. Where'd Colin go? See, he's not even here.
He knew he was next to get, get a check from the, uh...
Exactly, yeah. So, you know, I, I think, uh, fantastic. Great stuff.
Select person Gilfus.
Mr. Chair. I've been anxiously awaiting this presentation. Some folks in the audience and folks that are watching at home know that, uh, Warren and I worked together on the Visioning Committee, other folks in the audience. And that was really my first foray into, uh, the town politics and, um, and service to the town. And I, when I entered that Visioning Committee, I believed that I was neutral. That I did not have any opinion about Winslow School one way or the other. I was fairly new to town. I did not go to Winslow School. And when I toured for the first time, I thought, this is so obviously disgusting. We need to tear this building down. But over the course of our time together, sitting in this room with a group of really diverse representation, people had really different experiences with the school and with the town and hearing from residents, I was really surprised that I came out the other side and really wanted to save the building. And so now, like, I don't know where we ultimately will go with this. Um, I think there's a lot to consider. I'm really appreciative of the presentation. I think coming out of the Visioning Committee, the thing that I heard most clearly from residents was that the town center does matter to folks. And I think you're totally right, Augie, about that. What that looks like, I don't, I don't think the town knew, but I think that they were really open to exploring that together and to have that vision. And so the, the, um, suggestions that you have here, I think are really exciting. I think that, um, residents really loved the idea of keeping the facade of the building or like that sort of look and feel. But they didn't know how it might be used, if it needed to stay sort of a public use building like is being described here, if it would be something else. The one thing that we all agreed on is we did not want it to be housing. We knew that that, uh, you know, having rentals or condos didn't feel like the right thing. But I, I just, I'm really excited to continue this work and to continue the conversation uh, cause I do think that this really matters to the town and to the residents.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Uh, as always, you always make a compelling argument, no matter what, no matter what way you're arguing, uh, about what topic. I've talked to Augie enough about, uh, many different things. Um, the one thing here that, you know, we do need to really look at, well, a couple of things. Um, one is, uh, you know, the select board, uh, has made, uh, building a fire station a, a priority and the top priority. Uh, you know, and, and that's gonna, you know, definitely gonna be a, a tax increase for the residents. How much, you know, hopefully we can do something similar as we did to the, to the middle school. Uh, and we can, uh, have some money out of the operating budget. We have looked at this building and redoing the building before. And, uh, the assessment that we made, you, you, you're not gonna just be able to use mass preservation of, or CPC funds, I'm sorry. Uh, it's gonna be a lot more than that. Uh, and we've looked at similar buildings and square footage and what it's gonna take. Uh, so I believe it would be a tax increase. I'm, I'm very positive of that based on a lot of the assessments we made. What a lot of people don't know is, you know, the people that go and do historical preservation, there's very, very few companies that do that now. I don't know why, uh, but, you know, we looked at it a few years ago. It was like three or four that we're currently doing in the state. So it's very expensive to hire them and to do this. So, you know, I believe it would be a significant tax increase to do this. And so, you know, I guess my recommendation would be if you're looking for feedback, is not going in front of a town meeting and just asking to redo the outside of the building. Would really, you know, I think the residents would really wanna know what's, what's the total cost gonna end up being. Um, and from what I've heard, it's gonna be a lot more than that. Um, so, that's my little comment to you. Yeah, and, and, I mean, I think that's the thing that we hear the most from folks is, okay, what's it gonna cost and what are the, we have some musts. You know, we've got the fire right now, which is, which is a must. And how many of these are the shoulds? I, I think the good news is that the center of town has examples, as you said, where we've done some things and people are enjoying those items. You know, the other thing I hear from people is, okay, we want meeting space and we wanna have community center. Well, okay, so what are we doing with the clubhouse at the old golf course? What are we doing with the old rec center building on Westford Road? What are we doing with the old town hall that has been? So, we have these buildings and we have to sit there and say, as part of a big plan, what are we doing with all of these things? Um, that's what I hear from people and it's like, okay, I get it. Um, I do think that one thing that I also hear from everybody is, if money was not a factor, we would love to have that, you know, restored to, to what it was and have that, you know, a nice white building just sitting there at the top of that hill. Unfortunately, we don't have unlimited money. And that's, that's where we're trying to figure out, okay, how do we do this? How do we get that to, to work? I think that there's some short-term things that we need to figure out, you know? How do we, I, I think, taking the step of, of abating the building and getting those things addressed, uh, making it so that, okay, we can decide to do something. I think it sat there, as you said, the school had it for a while, nothing was done. We all agree that wasn't good. And just leaving it there, sitting there doing nothing, also not good. We need to figure out what we wanna do. And I think that what you've given us here is a compelling vision of what could be done. And I think to, you know, Mr. Cohane's point, I think what we need to figure out is, okay, what does that look like over a five or seven-year period of time? What does that look like? Not just from a, oh, I, I wanna have a farmer's market, cause I think your ideas are fantastic and I think everybody likes those. I think it's, okay, what's it gonna cost and where's the money gonna come from? Cause that's where, I mean, I get asked that all the time. And I'm sure you dealt with it before. Are my taxes going up and what, what are we doing to pay for this? And the, you know, I, by the way, I love pie charts, just so you know.
Big points.
Yeah, people look at their pie and they sit there and say, okay, this is the pie for the, the money. Okay, w- w- I don't have any more, I'm not, I can't do another pie. I only have this, so where's that money gonna come from? And that's where I think we struggle the most. And I'm sure everybody does. It's, it's one of those things because it, it is a challenge. So, I think the items, um, we need to figure out how we would have a path there for those things. The other thing I, I, I would like to understand is, are we willing? So there's the building, right? The building as it is with the, the outside, there's the windows, there, you know, all the things that we had talked about. We said, we've got the timbers and, and some of those things. Are there things where we look at that and say, could we not have that exact, m- those materials and have something else that maintains the, um, the memory and the, that space? But it might not be that building because that building, you know, was built as a school in the, you know, a hundred years ago, a hundred-plus years ago. Are there other things, I, I think, where we say, let's maintain that location. We don't want it for housing. We don't want it for a supermarket. We want it to maintain the character of the center. And how do we do that? Um, maybe with some newer materials or things where it fits in with other needs that we have. I think we have to explore some of those types of possibilities as well. If, if the answer is, no, we, we're not willing to do some of those, then I, you know, we're kinda, we're limited as to how many different options we have. So, I don't know the answers to any of those questions and I'm sure you folks have had discussions at the... discussions at the historical commission level, um, but I think that's going to have to be stuff that, because I, I hear, that's what people say. They're like, yep, I, I get it, I'd love to do it, but are we willing to look at alternatives to some of those things?
Mr. Chair, if I could add?
Go ahead.
You just, you reminded me, um...
Because I'm sure Mr. Alker would want to...
Well...
It was closed. Jackie knows if I stop, she might get an edge in.
You reminded me, um, when you were talking about, like, how do we preserve it without necessarily tying ourselves to the physical building or the physical space? And, um, remembering that we did fund the library doing the oral history project. So no matter what happens to the building, no matter where this goes, that is happening. Um, so I'm really excited about that because I think that that's going to be, like, a really beautiful tribute to the, the pieces that you were describing about the historical significance and sort of the journey that the town has gone through tied to the building, the people that have come out of the school. Um, so that's a piece of it. I did have a question. On slide eight, you mentioned the previous committee that was formed to evaluate the use of land for a fire or police station. I do remember that there was that public safety building committee, um, and it was, I think, just about the same time that we were doing the visioning committee. They were like, I think they were wrapping up just as we were starting.
Or the other way around, one or the other.
And I just don't remember, the note here says that it was determined that traffic and limited access made it impractical. Does anyone just have, like...
Mr. Cohane was on that committee.
Something, yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was on the committee. I, I mean, the, the key reason they didn't want to use the, or we couldn't use the land in the Winslow really was when we were talking about a police and fire combined, there wasn't enough room. So when we talk about a fire station only, then it became enough room on that. I mean, we, they did talk about traffic or whatever, but, you know, clearly if you have a fire station or whatever, you, you're, we're going to probably put a light, you know, there to make sure that you're able to get through the traffic, especially a busy road and it's only going to get busier is Middlesex Road, right? So, uh, we would, we would ask the state to put a, 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 a light up there. Um, so whenever they want to go through, they, they can go through.
Thank you.
Can I, can I get back to Mr. Oldgrove?
Yes.
Sorry. I left you hanging.
Oh, it's okay. I get used to it. But I, I, you know, I'll, I'll kind of address that a little bit right now. The, um, when you talk about dragging a 45-foot truck out of that driveway, which you really can't use, that, you know, any other spot but that driveway. I mean, because it doesn't, you can't go through the library and you can't go over the hill because that puts you on Winslow Thomas Road. The, um, someday you'll have to straighten that out. And so, so you're stuck with that particular entrance. I mean, anybody that's been on Middlesex Road during those heavy times and five o'clock at night during it, you, you, the, the traffic is like, uh, those lights, they change every 20, 25 seconds. So when the line wants to go across the bridge, wants to go across the bridge, it goes way up past, um, the, the car lot and they're waiting. And it doesn't matter if you put, I, I know we got the, uh, the Depcon, is that what it's called? What the heck is that system called? The lights, where you push them? Well, anyways, they got the systems, so when you push...
It rhymes with what you've said. It rhymes with what you said.
Yeah.
Now the name's escaping me, too.
I could go.
Opticon, thank you.
What is it?
Opticon.
Opticon, right. So you got the opticon system. So when you think about how that works, so they get a call, they climb in the truck, the opticon system's been set, and you got traffic that's from the use, the, not the u, the, the car lot, all the way down to the center and all those people. Well, if you push the light, the only way that that dumps the traffic is to run it straight through. But the people that are going to take a left, they're not going to go straight through. They want to go across the bridge. So now you've got to have the opticon system over there to sync with this one and now you're praying that you're going to get all those cars. It just doesn't make any sense to build a problem into what you're doing. And it's not going to be less traffic. It's certainly more now than it was 10 years ago. So, you know, you'd, you'd, I'll tell you what, you'd have to get the engineer and that would be the first thing you'd have to figure out is how you're going to dump all the traffic because you've got Farwell Road coming in, you've got them going down Winslow Thomas to, uh, to stack up to try to cut across on Ken, up, down, well, Kendall Road to 113. I don't know what they call the bridge. Is it 113 or is it Kendall Road? The, um, so, another question, see, it's just like Thomas. So, you know, it, it would seem like you would want to solve that problem first before you'd even consider it. And, um, so, so that's just, that's just that, Ron. So money, always a problem, right? So who would have thought that we were going to tear down the high school that was opened in 1970 and spend $100 million for another school? I didn't vote for it. I know you didn't vote for it. You're way too cheap. You're even worse than me. So...
I honestly did, I did vote for the new middle school, even though I am cheaper than you, yes. I would agree with that.
So it, it, you know, it was based on, well, we don't want our kids in an old building and because they don't learn as much. And I often thought, boy, the people that send their kids to Notre Dame's must be pretty angry, huh? So, so anyway, but, but to say, so the people voted to build the new school and they knew their taxes were going to go up. And so, so you can't say that, that just because, you can't put it out there just because you don't think that people are willing to pay for it. That's, I mean, they just, the, the school was $100 million. So y- y- you know, there's, there's another way...
It was in the 80s, but...
You know, so, and, and we certainly could have got away with the old school. So it's what they want. Um, so those, that, and what was there was one other thing we were talking, oh, I think that we, we could phase it in. I do think that that's a, that's a possible thing to do. And, um, y- you know, to, to, to just say you can't do it, I mean, if, if you're getting a nod to try to do something, then you can go further. And the, and the fact is, is no, we don't get all the money. They only go, give you a hundred grand a year, but that's $500,000 over five years when, when you get matching funds from, from the state. So as we said at the beginning, we're not looking, I mean, it wa, it wasn't an estimated $13 million to convert that building into a town hall. I'm not looking for the 13 million. I'm looking for a chance to get started and start working this to get it done. I do want it done before I drop dead, but if that doesn't happen, I'll be okay for Adam to finish it. The, uh, it, but, but to just, uh, to just walk away and just say, well, we just can't do that, it, it, it's throwing away a piece of the town. I mean, there are people that, there are, um, y- you know, a lot of people that went through there that became figures in Washington. A, a woman named Wilkins became the person who started all the dental care that you see today. She's world renowned for it. I mean, she went through the school. There are people, it wasn't just me. There were other people that went through, you know? So you don't have to hate me. You can, you can think of that...
Oh, you're the most famous one to come up.
So, um, I, I just, we have to look at, it gives the town its character, it, it gives its, its li, lineage, the history of the town's important. And when we have people up here and, and, um, you know, this town is now looking for people to donate land and that type of thing, well, in a sense, this is what was done here. The land was donated and the school was paid for. And if you're not going to treat the people that did that 100 years, 200 years ago, why would anybody in this day and age think you're going to treat what they want to donate any better? So it also is kind of a, how the town is perceived. So those are just some things to, uh...
Yeah, and, and I think one, one thing that I didn't hear was that, um, we don't want to pursue this. I think it's one of those things that if we're going to pursue it, we need to understand what, what the costs are going to be. The thing with the school, costs were relatively known. There were plans, it was, you know, that was there. I think, and we don't have to get to that level of specificity, but I think we need to sit there and say, orders of magnitude to sit there and say, are we talking about a, a $2 million project over five years? Are we talking about a $10 million project? Whatever it is. I, and I don't, I don't have any numbers on that. I do also think that you, you hit the nail right on the head as far as history matters and, and it absolutely does matter. And I think we need to, we, we talked about it, that those people that were there and the people, you know, that donated the land and the people that went through that school and the, and the people that have, you know, been part of Tingsborough during that period, we need to maintain that history. I think the challenge is going to be, is that, does that building really define that history or is it an indication of that, of that? It's part of it, right? Like the Littlefield and the, you know, First Parish Meeting House and the Old Town Hall. It, it, it's part of it. Is it all of it? And so I think those are the types of things that we need to take residents through to say, this is how we're going to go through and do that, maintain the character, maintain the history, um, continue with the vision of the center, but do it in a way that they're willing, because we can't write a check. You know, that, that's the reality.
I know how it works.
We, we, exactly. We can't write the check. It's town meeting and so we need to take residents through that.
I think what we, what we're hoping for is that you see that the, uh, the positive things that outweigh the negative things and that, um, we would like to be able to take the money that the people felt that they wanted, that, that basically voted to save what they could, the only way they could, because that was the only choice, they really had to save it. And I would hope that we could take that and say, okay, you know, let's at least get the building in an envelope so it doesn't deteriorate.
Logistically, Colin, we have, what do we have to do with that? So let's say town meeting allocated the money based on, you know, a particular plan and there was one and a half million, we couldn't do it within that budget, there, there's whatever that's left on that. Does that have to go back to CPC at that point and then it has to go through the CPC process again?
To use, yeah, to change the use of the CPC funding, CPC, you, you would make the request to the community preservation committee, they would recommend it to town meeting and town meeting would approve the new request.
But it first has to go back to them, how does it go back to them?
By application to CPC.
So we would, they would have to apply to take the money back and then they would go through...
Augie knows a member of the CPC.
Yeah, it's not a, it, it's, it's not that complicated.
In the meantime, that funding remains in a bucket reserve. Only CPC and town meeting can reallocate that money. So that money stays reserved for the original project until such time it's modified.
Right. But that would have, that would just have, both of those, those steps would ha, and they, two separate steps could be in the same meeting, but they have to go through town meeting.
Right.
Just wanted to make sure that I, because I thought that's the way it was, wanted to make sure.
The CPC had, looks, um, upon the project very nicely, so, um...
Did you want to come up, Marie?
I've been in the historical commission for 30 years, as long as he's been in it, too. Um, I remember the Old Town Hall. People would call me at least once a week and say, oh, why do you want to save that building? It's falling apart, termites and all of that. It took us 14 years.
Would you mind sitting down? Thank you.
The microphone can hear you.
It took 14 years, actually, what was it? Uh, 12 years to start on that building. When we first brought it to town, um, the price to do it was not, you know, was just small portion of how, what we ended up spending when it finally got approved because people didn't have the vision. Oh, what's this going to be used for? Unless you have a use for it, you can't do anything with the building. You know, people lack the vision, they just don't want it, take it. And that was our first building. Then it was the first meeting house, same thing. It, that one didn't get as much resistance as the Old Town Hall. It was 14 years from the time we started, um, planning for the Old Town Hall to the time when we actually finished. And it's used every week. You know, all weekends I see it out of my backyard. The cars are all, you know, the parking lot is filled with cars. Same thing with the First Parish Meeting House. So now the Winslow School is the last historic building in the center of town, the very last one. There isn't any other building that has that history. And we are proposing to do it by steps. We're not asking for all the funds right away. You know, we're trying to do it in a way that it won't create a big burden to the town financially with CPC money and grants money. And I think it can be done. And I like to be alive when it's done and prove that it will be used, not just by the people in town, but perhaps for an annex to the to the town hall here.
Fantastic.
You know, it's just, it has to be done. It really does. It's our last building and why people come to town, they come to look at the character of the town, you know? And that's all year long. Block party is once a year. Festival trees is one week a mo, a year, you know? But the building is there all year long. The vision, what people see is there every day. And that's what brings people to town. It's not like it was, you know, before we even started where people would say, oh, where's the center of town? And you would say, the lights. You know, that's the center of town. So we come a long ways, so why stop now? You know, it's the very last building. After that, you know, there is no other historic buildings.
Will be gone.
Thank you. Well, thanks. Appreciate it. Again, look forward to...
Thank you for your time. Thanks for coming in. Thanks for the presentation.
Yeah, um, look forward to seeing what, what the proposal is and maybe we have something that's...
Well, I guess I, I really don't know what the next, I mean, unless, unless Colin's going to tell me, go ahead. I don't know.
I think it's got to come through CPC. We can't, we can't do anything.
No, I know, we got to go to CPC, but...
But I'll follow up with Augie. I think there were some things the board mentioned they wanted to see and better understand and I can work with Augie and Adam and they can work with the historical commission to maybe paint a clearer picture.
Yeah, I think it's more, um, these are things that we know residents are going to ask. We're just trying to, um, you know, I know that you did this, you pulled some great things together. We're just saying, these are the questions that are going to come up, so...
All right.
Appreciate you showing it to us, um, because you did paint a good vision.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask because I didn't know...
Carry it back because I haven't got a shopping cart.
There you go, thank you.
From the agenda, um, there is an appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust and I understand the applicant is here, perhaps?
Oh, the applicant is here?
And I, they've been waiting patiently, so I would like to see if we can jump to 7A.
Totally agreeable and I'll turn it over to Jackie.
Thank you. I am pleased to present the board with a letter of interest from Ms. Lisa Singleton to serve as the Tingsborough, on the Tingsborough Housing Trust. There is currently one opening for a resident at large on this committee. Ms. Singleton is a 40-year resident in the town of Tingsborough who has been employed by the Chelmsford Housing Authority and is affiliate, and its affiliate, the nonprofit Choice, for almost 20 years. She has experience in assessing community preservation funds to develop new affordable housing units and has firsthand knowledge on how communities can leverage local funds to secure greater state awards, making new developments possible. Additionally, Ms. Singleton has managed affordable housing lotteries and is familiar with the 40B process and inclusionary zoning. Ms. Singleton brings a wealth of experience which can be used to help Tingsborough, the Tingsborough Affordable Housing Trust with updating the housing protection plan, production plan, I'm sorry, and other projects.
Well, thank you, Ms. Singleton.
Thank you.
I appreciate you stepping up, uh, based on your resume, you're wildly qualified. Uh, did you want to add anything to that glowing description?
No, I just would like to thank you for the opportunity. When I saw that there was an opening, I realized that, you know, I might've had something that I could add to the committee, so I thought it was time for me to step up and throw my hat into the ring.
Fantastic. I'll open it up to the board.
Sure. Um, first of all, sorry to make you wait.
That's okay. I was interested.
You're, you're, you're here. But, yeah, thank you very much for stepping up. Very qualified, and anybody that can add to a committee, we'd love to have you, and, you know, it sounds like you're probably pretty passionate about this.
Absolutely.
And that's fantastic.
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
As far as I'm concerned, anyway. Person Gilfus.
Thank you. And we already spoke over email-
We did.
And, you know, we were able to chat a little bit. I'm thrilled that we will likely have you. And to be able to work with you on the trust, it's really, I, I think, the most fulfilling thing that I've done on select board so far is being a part of this, so looking forward to doing that work with you.
Well, thank you very much, Jackie.
She gets to work with you, that's the biggest bonus.
Yes.
There you go.
It's been a pleasure so far.
Mr. Marianne.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Mr. Chair, or person who makes the motion, I say we get this wonderful person back to her lovely, warm home.
With that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the select board appoint Lisa Singleton as a member of the Tingsborough Affordable Housing Trust, effective immediately through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Mr. Chair, I second that. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries four zero zero. Thank you, and welcome aboard. Again, sorry for the delay.
No, not at all. Actually interested. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, now, Colin, we can get back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm thrilled to welcome Annabelle Evren to the team in the library. Annabelle started today as our new children's librarian. I'd also like to welcome James Smith to the Tingsborough Public Library. He'll start on February sixth as our new library technician. We're excited to welcome Officer Ryan McLean back to Tingsborough. Officer McLean returned earlier this month from a year-long deployment at the southern border with the Massachusetts National Guard. He was appointed a full-time officer in Tingsborough in July twenty twenty-three and previously served as a military police officer with the National Guard. He'll complete a modified field training program before returning to solo patrol. We are currently looking for a qualified administrative professional to join our team as a public safety administrative assistant. That position will support the fire department's administrative operations. It will also support the public records aspect of the police department. The full job description is posted online at tingsbrowma.gov. The Engineering Division is working to finalize the design for the sidewalk project on Norris Road. This project calls for the installation of sidewalks from Frost Road to the school campus, and was funded in last year's capital plan. A community meeting with abutting properties will be held in early February to explain the project and give residents a chance to ask questions. The Conservation Department is working on a large-scale survey project to clearly delineate public open space, starting with the Bell property and then moving toward the Hunter-Norton property. The department is also working with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission and the Andover Conservation Commission to expand their ongoing Merrimack River cleanup initiative into Tingsborough. The Tingsborough Fire Department was awarded nineteen thousand dollars from the Department of Fire Services through the Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Firefighter Safety Grant Program. This brings our Fiscal Year Twenty-Five grant total across all general government departments to just over one point eight million. On the topic of the fire department, I'm happy to report that the new Engine One was delivered to town two weeks ago and is now in service. It replaces a two thousand pumper that was approved by town meeting at fall town meeting in October twenty twenty-four. The purchase came in about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars lower than the appropriation. This board will remember that last year it approved the recommendation of a council on aging, that the senior center be renamed to the Center for Active Living to better reflect the work that we're doing to increase involvement and reach more residents. Earlier this month, governor followed suit, signing an executive order formally changing the Executive Office of Elder Affairs to the Executive Office of Aging and Independence. As far as Tingsborough is concerned, we're working to plan a grand rededication ceremony for the Center of Active Living on Friday, June twentieth, at eleven a.m. The celebration coincides with the ten-year anniversary of our move into that building. An exciting update on the middle school, that project is moving forward on time and under budget. We are well on track to open the new school for the twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. The current schedule calls for the move from the old school to the new school to begin in the last week of June. As soon as school ends for the summer, the abatement and demolition of the old middle school will begin, and will be complete well ahead of the first day of school on August twenty-fifth, which is when all students will report to the new school. The project remains under budget, with an owner's contingency of two point nine million dollars still available, and one point four million in construction contingency untouched as of this month. The Tingsborough Board of Health will host a Narcan training on Thursday, February sixth, from one p.m. to two p.m. at the, at town hall. No registration is required. Our health department and the town clerk's office are planning a rabies vaccination clinic at the Center for Active Living on Saturday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. It's going to be from nine a.m. to one p.m. Registration is not required, but you can make an appointment online through the town's website. They're charging twenty dollars for the vaccine. You can get either a one-year vaccine, if it's the dog or cat's first shot, and then also you can get a three-year one. Our town clerk's office will also have staff available to help people register their dogs in accordance with the town's bylaw. I'm happy to share that the town was awarded thirty-seven thousand dollars in technical assistance through the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. These funds will help us work through amendments to our accessory dwelling unit zoning regulations to comply with the recent change in state law, which the changes will be minor, our bylaw was pretty much already compliant. Coordination of the Regional CEO Support Program and additional assistance managing our housing efforts in Tingsborough. And then finally, on a less exciting update, this weekend, the my annual business meeting took place, and the range of rate increases across the health trusts were announced. This is our health insurance. Unfortunately, the rate increases across all communities range from the lowest increase being nine point nine percent and the highest being nineteen. The average is fourteen point eight. The good news is that our budget included a ten percent increase, and I can't imagine that will fall at the top of the range. The bad news is, even if we saw just that nine point nine percent, the budget does become a little bit tighter. As you remember, this was the area we were hoping would shake out. I expect in the next few days, we'll get our actual numbers, and at your first meeting in February, we'll have a better update on the budget. And that is all that I have today.
Great. Kat, you want to do your update, and then I'll open it up for questions and comments?
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Just one update for the board. The Capital Asset Management Committee met last Wednesday to approve the FY twenty-six capital plan. The committee approved approximately three hundred and forty thousand dollars in requests, which is in addition to the fire pumper truck approved at the fall special town meeting. The three hundred and, the three hundred and forty thousand includes exterior building upgrades at the police station and a new backhoe for the Department of Public Works.
Thank you. With that, I'll open it up to the board. Mr. Marianne.
I'm fine with the update. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Select person Gilfus.
Mr. Manager, did we do a ceremonial push-in of the new fire truck?
We did not.
Which I did not know was a thing until the Lowell Sun-
Post of the Drake gets?
Yeah, and then I was like really upset that I hadn't been invited to ours, but it sounds like we didn't do one.
Our, our bays are very narrow. Pushing it in is a little risky.
I want no risks, so understood. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Crane?
You got no comments.
Um, let's see.
We'll push in the backhoe.
Yeah, you don't want to get backhoe?
Yeah, just as a, so, a couple of things. So on the healthcare, our healthcare costs, that's all, we've got contracts for staff, so it is what it is. We don't, we, that, that's not something that we can tweak or anything like that, to be clear. The exterior building upgrades, a police station that we did for Capital Asset, those were based on the first recommendations from the consultant that we had looking at our buildings, and that, those were the critical items. I do want to thank the department heads, and Kat, and Colin, and probably Jackie did, you know, the paperwork, but, for being fiscally prudent and, you know, only coming with the items that were there. There was a, a lot of work on that. I think we said that our next meeting, we're going to spend more on providing guidance to the departments on how do we deal with some of the little onesie twosies that they're having a hard time getting into their budgets, that, that really should be our role, rather than, you know, the, the day-to-day stuff, which you folks have taken off our plate. But the real thing, so the school is not going to cost a hundred million, as was mentioned here, and-
Contrary to popular belief, it will not.
And, and, and what you're telling me is that it's going to come in on time and under budget?
Correct. When we talk about it being an eighty-four million dollar school, just a reminder that some of that is coming from the MSBA. The town will be on the hook for less than fifty-four million.
Ah.
Just so we're on the same page.
Exactly. So I, I think it's important for people to understand that, that the townspeople are spending fifty-four million, which, if, if I'm not mistaken, even before we had, had any cost escalations and things like that from COVID supply chains, fixing the old building and retrofitting that was going to be even more than that. So I just think it's important for people to understand those, those numbers.
And may I ask a follow-up?
Of course.
Of that fifty-four million that, that you said the town is on the hook for, is that inclusive of the million dollars a year that the town-
Yeah.
-has committed? And it's, it's, what is it, thirty years?
Yeah, so it's fifty-four million that is Tingsborough tax dollars. Thirty million or so of it is going to be through that million-dollar contribution within the tax levy.
Yep.
The balance, twenty-two to twenty-four, depending on where the project close out, that's going to be the debt exclusion piece, which is on top of your regular tax bill.
Thank you, sir.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's fifty-four million that we're borrowing. The, the net on it is, the debt on that is about a little under three million dollars a year, based on the bond. One million of that, for the next thirty years, is paid through the operating budget, so.
Right.
Let's not make it sound, we are borrowing fifty-four million.
Thank you.
It just-
Oh, yes. Yeah, I'm just trying to portray that the debt exclusion piece will be reduced by the thirty million.
Over time, over time, over the thirty years.
Yeah, we're saying the same thing.
Correct.
Yeah, we're saying the same thing. Everybody's on the same page.
Okay.
Hundred million dollar building is what I heard.
No.
I heard one bitty one.
All right.
Just kidding.
Anything else on that? As always, fantastic update, lots of things going on. Residents would be wise to read this and stay up to date on this, even if you don't want to watch the prior hour and forty-five minutes that we had. Okay, goals, fiscal twenty-five goals, how are we doing? And you might want to go quickly through these?
So I'm going to, I, I will talk about each goal slowly. Some of them I'll give more detail, but I just want to point out that there's a page on the town manager's page and the select board's page that links to this document. It was included in the select board packet. There's a lot, so I won't read everything. From the last time you saw this, I color-coded it, added anticipated timelines, and put in-progress items. I won't go into, number one, we talked a lot about today, reviewing the inventory of town-owned buildings. One of the things that I would like to do is spend time, I've already started talking to the rec. department and some stakeholders, figuring out exactly what, if any, use we still have for the one twenty Westford Road building. I would hope to present to the select board by the end, by the beginning of the summer, what the options are, so that potentially a October town meeting could make decisions, if there are decisions to be made, about the use of the building. Winslow School, we talked at state, at length about, so we're not going to talk about that. When it comes to the Department of Public Works, we talked about, once it's established, formalizing a facilities division. We did that in practice this year. The budget next year formally creates it, so residents will be able to see exactly how much we spend townwide on facilities. And our current, our DPW is working with the facilities folks and other communities to develop standing, standard operating procedures for all of our buildings. One of the things that we lacked going into a DPW was any centralized effort to maintain our buildings. This board has dealt with that at length. We had department heads managing their own buildings, and that really hasn't worked. So this will certainly create efficiencies. One of the items that we're going to have to start on is conversations with our media department about a PEG center. That was, that was mentioned tonight. One of the things I just want to put out into, into the community is that PEG funds are going down at an alarming rate. We do have about eight hundred thousand dollars currently reserved for PEG center that was part of a town meeting appropriation to maybe build a new one. Rony and I talk very often about what the future of PEG is. Unlike some of our peers who have developed these elaborate PEG operations, as those funds dwindle, they're going to have to start looking at scaling back what they're doing and laying people off. Tingsborough, right now, delivers the critical services that our media department needs to. Our meetings are recorded, they're broadcast, they're put online. Those are things that we would have to continue to do, even if the PEG funds dried up. So Rony and I are playing this balancing act, where we'd love to expand where we can, but we also don't want to put ourselves in a situation where in two years, we're talking about scaling things back. Develop a five-year plan for staffing, services, equipment, and infrastructure for each department. Not going to go into the police and fire stations, we talked a lot about that. Dillavalli Report helped us develop a five-year comprehensive facilities plan. Mr. Eldridge noted that we started working on that as relates to the police department this year and our current capital recommendation. Chief Russell has spent a lot of time looking at the department's organization. Some of that is being incorporated in our ongoing collective bargaining efforts, and we'll expand that to really ensure that we have a long-term plan. These types of plans have existed in the police department for a while. Obviously, we've looked at, in the last year, the, the department's structure has changed, and I expect that it will be slightly unique for at least a few more years. So those conversations are largely contingent on budget. We're working on finalizing the fiscal twenty-six budget and using that as our kickoff point for a real five-year plan. I suspect we're heading into continued trying times for a bit of time, until some of the larger projects come online. So I don't know that we'll see significant changes, but one of the areas we know is a priority is increasing our staffing in the Department of Public Works across all divisions, and then obviously in public safety as well. We talk, every, every meeting about how we communicate with our residents. We've done a lot with the media department to put out videos. Our budget office hours are coming back, and we'll announce those dates later this week. The, in the town center digital sign, I know I'm biased, because that's my baby, but it's been a huge success. It's now being used by the school department, the library, and all of our general government departments. And we will work with our IT department to make sure that we're utilizing our current website and our financial software to be as transparent as possible. We did a lot of manual graphics for the fiscal twenty-five budget. We'll probably do some more for fiscal twenty-six, but certainly looking at how we can make that more advanced moving forward. We're talking about operational efficiencies all the time as a part of the budget planning process. We really expect folks to be efficient. We've started looking at, particularly in the DPW, how we restructure it to really represent what they do. Our superintendent met with the union last week to talk about formally establishing a grounds division, which would manage our parks and the cemetery, and then a streets division that would manage the roads. We do that sort of informally now, but depending on staffing levels, we switch people around, and so it doesn't allow us to really build the expertise that we need. So those are all going, obviously, in the wintertime, everybody's on winter operations for the most part, but we think that that's one clear area that we can make some improvements. A lot of what we'll do in terms of developing our, our five-year plan for creating efficiencies is going to rely on where we land with the five-year forecast. We've had conversations with many of our neighboring communities about what types of services across the area make sense to be regionalized, and I expect that those conversations will continue to happen. The other piece is working with the remaining unions, mainly our mid-managers and our clerical union here in this building, to finalize job descriptions. We have some positions with job descriptions that have been updated in the last five years, and then some that have never been updated, and I am ashamed to admit that we have some that never had a job description. So we have information to help us start that, thanks to the Collins Center, but we'll be working with them to really implement them. We talked a lot already about the five-year budget forecast. One of the toughest pieces of that is figuring out when we can expect certain new growth projects to come in line. So Ben McClure, our town planner and economic development director, and our building commissioner, they've been working really closely with all of the permitted projects to say, hey, listen, what's the status? We met with Sam Park a few weeks ago. We know what to expect there. We know that Brock's and the 84 Kennel Road project are coordinating on utilities. So once we have a better idea of that, it's going to help us figure out really when we can expect to see that new growth. This board recently gave its okay to an Economic Development Advisory Council. We've advertised for folks to join. I know that Ben has talked to a couple of local businesses about that. I think it's a great way for us to ensure that our strategy to attracting and retaining businesses is relevant. We also know that over time, the opportunities for increased commercial development have now become very narrow. And so working with NIMCOG and Middlesex III, which is the Regional Economic Development Group, figuring out who we should be courting to these specific parcels, whether it's the warehouse project that was permitted on Middlesex Road or working with Brock's to identify tenants for their building. We're running out of space to develop and we want to make sure the space that we do develop is done correctly. The Affordable Housing, the, uh, continue our efforts on affordable housing, primarily through reviewing the housing production plan. I heard from NIMCOG today that there's a draft ready to be reviewed, so I'll be asking the Affordable Housing Trust to meet in the next two weeks to review that and I expect that at some point in early March, it'll be available for the select board and the planning board to review. Um, and I, I just want to clarify on this piece, that is developing, it's reviewing, developing and implementing strategies specific to Tingsboro. That the Affordable Housing Trust and our office, the planning office, have worked very hard to make sure that all the strategies that we have presented, that we've included, are Tingsboro-specific. Things that work in Tingsboro, maintain the character of Tingsboro and do, do smart growth. Monitor the plans for the extension of the commuter rail. We talk about this all the time. Um, now, former rep, uh, Custer of New Hampshire was pushing to get that project back on track. The city of Nashua is still very interested in it, so we're continuing to see where that lands, but it's a little bit out of our hands. We've talked a lot about the Department of Public Works already, so I'll move on to goal number 10. Uh, unfortunately, we did release a request for proposals last month looking for developers to put solar on Town Hall and the Center for Active Living. We receive, or we distributed the, the request for proposals to about 17 solar firms. None of them submitted responses and I think there's two reasons. One, we did not offer a PPA, which is a power purchase agreement. Many of you I've talked to individually about the solar farm that we buy credits from on the former Charles George landfill. One of the things that we're going to have to talk about and, and we had a meeting today in our office to discuss is when we signed that 20-year lease, we agreed to buy a certain percentage of the power generated and we are locked in to that percentage for the next 20 years. We signed that agreement in 2016, but since 2016, we've invested a ton of green communities money in reducing our energy use in municipal buildings. So we're actually now at a point where we're buying more energy than we need. So we, we've got to try to restructure that. I'm not sure that we're going to be able to easily, but for that very reason, it didn't make sense for us to then enter into a purchase-power agreement. I've reached out to the firm that the Tingsboro Public Schools use. They have a slightly different arrangement, um, and so hopefully we'll have some interest in there. The other option is that we can expand the buildings that we're offering to make the project slightly more worthwhile for an investor. Um, we're still discussing some matters around Drake Water, so I'll skip that one for this, this piece. Continue to pursue state and federal grant opportunities. I mentioned earlier that, um, just over halfway into the year, we're at 1.8 million in grants received by general government departments. One of the areas that we lacked was a formal tracking of the grants. So every year, we threw things at the wall and saw what stuck. This process has helped us not just keep track of our existing grants, the expenditures, make sure that we're being reimbursed for every single dollar we spend under a grant. It's also creating an annual tracking system where we can now look back and say, oh, September's coming up. We have to apply for the MOD grants or, um, January's here, the community one-stop-for-growth is open. So that's been very helpful and we're pushing that out to all of our departments. The regular reminders also just reminds our staff that grants are super important and I don't have to explain to the board how well we've done with grants. We've got work to do on developing a personnel recruitment and retention strategy. Um, item 14 talks about the La Valley Brenzinger Report, which we've talked about in a previous item. We talked during our efficiencies conversation about, um, looking into regional shared service opportunities. As a part of our five-year budget discussion, we're really looking at this. We know that we've had inquiries about regional ambulance service, building commissioners, veteran services. Um, so there's a lot of areas that we can look at. I think what we'll see is as many of our communities that are in tighter budget scenarios than we are start to finalize their fiscal '26 budget, that demand for increased regional services is going to really come up. And then finally, discussions about reliable infrastructure utility service in Tingsboro. We followed up with National Grid. We got something from them. Um, we've talked to National Grid. They've got plans, excuse me, for their tree trimming to ensure that power lines stay active. And I think a lot of this will also tie into our ongoing conversations kind of behind the scenes with the Drake Water District and even the Tingsboro Water District as well. I know that was a lot. If board members have questions about any specific goal, let me know. This is on the website if residents have questions. Um, but I thought it was important to show kind of the timelines. Makes it a little easier to keep an eye on.
Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Moran, questions, comments?
No. Um, thank you very much.
Select person Gilfus?
Thank you for your diligence. Looks good.
You got it. Mr. Cohen?
Well, when I looked at these goals, um, over the holidays and I was kind of, um, doing my year-end planning and, uh, the coming year planning, uh, I started looking at some of our older goals also. Uh, and really what I wanted to talk about a little bit is, is more of a, of a higher level of what we've been doing every single year with the goals, right? So every year, we look at the goal, we, we put goals together. The one goal that I saw in all past goals was to improve communication with the residents and that's something that we've worked really hard at. Uh, residents have given us a lot of good, uh, uh, input on that and we've implemented those. Uh, so that's one of the things that we have every single time. Um, the number of times Colin said efficiencies throughout that goals, uh, was another key, uh, pillar that we really have been looking at from, from planning perspective. Um, extra revenue, uh, bringing in, um, you know, you know, go back in history. We've got a billboard that's bringing over $200,000 on an annual basis to us. The marijuana money is bringing in over a million dollars and we're always looking for more revenue besides tax revenue from the residents. Uh, and that was the idea about the solar. Uh, anytime we can, uh, bring some more revenue in would be great. Uh, you know, grants, 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 uh, you know, we're now bringing in two to three million, uh, dollars a year, uh, every single year. And we spend a lot of money, uh, on infrastructure. We've talked about the, uh, the new middle school. Um, soon I hope we'll see a DPW building going up. Uh, now we're talking about a fire station. Of course, the residents, uh, roads, roads, roads. We've quadrupled the road funding on an annual basis, uh, you know, for them. Um, you know, Augie talked about the town center. Uh, also on the goals every single year was to, uh, you know, you know, improve the town center. I think for five years in a row, we got grants and then sometimes CPC money, uh, to augment that, to expand our town center, to have what we have today. Uh, before that, you know, as like I said, we, you know, we just had the old town hall and that was pretty much it. You know, now we actually have a, a center. So, you know, a lot of good stuff there. Uh, and of course, uh, the admin team, conservative budget management, uh, which is, allows us to do that, allows us, you know, to put a million dollars into the middle school, uh, you know, reduce the tax impact, uh, to the residents. And I think that's one of the things that we've done, you know, over and over and over again. Uh, it tried to have very conservative budgets, uh, which has, uh, served us really well. Um, and, uh, will continue to serve us well. So, you know, really just wanted to kind of lift it up a level. You know, these are the things, you know, every single year we're looking at and we're just chipping away at it, you know, each of those particular goals, uh, and, you know, what our plans are moving forward. So, you know, good job, great job by all, uh, year after year. And, uh, you know, that's my comment. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I mean, I think that, uh, it's good to, um, have the goals, number one, and have periodic updates. I, I apologize for having you rush through them. Just one of those things, um, but, but it's good to see all these actions that are happening. Um, and these are beyond the day-to-day, right? There, there's a lot of things that happen in the day-to-day. So, um, I think this is, uh, really good. I did want to know, I, with the National Grid, I did hear perhaps some residents were saying that they're already talking to people and clearing trees and talking about, uh, some of that. So good first step. It's good that they have a plan. I think we're going to need to keep on that, um, for residents. Um, but I, I think that there's, there's a lot of good stuff happening and, um, I, I think that this is a, um, going to be another good year. So I appreciate what, um, what you and the team have done so far. Um, and hey, we only got five more months left, so.
Be done before you know it.
Be done before you know it.
So, thank you on that. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's all the new business and everything.
Sure is.
So I'll open it up for select board reports. Mr. Moran, did you want to start us off?
Sure. So, um, I just want to provide some clarity on some stuff. I heard some disturbing news that people were saying on some Facebook posts that I'm moving out of town or something like that. So I'll just state it now, I'm moving out of town. So if you hear anything else, it's fake news. Um, anything else to talk about is just, you know, hey, it's now the end of January. Hope everybody's had, uh, back to school, back to work, maybe dry January, be healthy, be well. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Select person Gilfus?
Um, I feel like I've just become like the mouth of friends of the Tingsboro Public Library, but I think that maybe is in my marital vows. Um, this week is the Tiny Art Show in the library. There were almost 50 submissions from residents. They are incredible. I'm like genuinely so impressed by, um, all of the pieces. So do stop by the library this week, check out the tiny art. Um, there are ballots available, so you can vote on your favorite pieces for the community awards. And then on Saturday from 10 to noon, there's going to be a reception and they're going to give out the awards. There's going to be, uh, refreshments. You can mingle with the artists. So it's a really lovely event.
Fantastic. Thank you.
See us Saturday.
Nothing tonight. Yeah, I have, I've, um, I will table any other thoughts for a later time. Um, our next meeting, we have our next meeting scheduled for February 10th and then another one on the 24th. Um, so with that, I will open up a, a motion to move into executive session.
Chair, move we enter executive session under exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares. NEPBA, Local 8B, Mark Bork versus Town of Tingsboro and Ferris v. Tingsboro Planning Board. And under exemption two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Accountant, Finance Director.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
I am in favor.
In favor.
In favor.
I am also in favor. We are going into executive session. Thank you all. Have a great evening.